I want to call this meeting of the Belton Independent School District Board of Trustees to order. The board members is present. This meeting's been duly called and posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. We have a special treat tonight. Our Belton High School Marine Corps Junior ROTC, under the oversight of Colonel Blasko, are here to post our colors. Our color guard is under the command of Nathan Morrison, and Madison Broadwell will be leading us in our pledges.
Color guard, halt! Ready, cut! Forward, march! Color guard, halt! Counter, march, march! Color guard, halt!
To the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now to the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Ready, cut! Counter, march, march! Color guard, halt! Post! Ready, cut! Present, arms! Order, arms! Ready, cut! Ready, face! Right, face! Forward, march, march! Arms!
Thank you. You may be seated. As always, our Marine Corps Junior ROTC does a great job posting the colors. They are an award-winning color guard, and so we're going to give them just a moment to reset, and we'll tell you one of the other reasons why we asked them to come to post our colors this evening. We have two remarkably remarkable groups who have been awarded great honors, so I'm stalling here just a minute for you, so they can come back in, put their equipment down and come back in. Okay, Elizabeth Cox, would you get us started with our recognition of our state color guard winners?
Yes, sir. Thank you. In December, thirty-seven cadets from the Belton Marine Corps JROTC program competed in Brenham High School's Marine Corps JROTC skills competition. The competition consisted of twenty high school programs from across the state, and two color guard units from Belton received top honors. The male color guard unit took first place under Commander Cadet Colonel Nathan Morrison, who he himself was rated as the best commander. Again, Cadet Colonel Nathan Morrison. Other members of the unit are Cadet Sergeant Major Elliott Sibily, Cadet Second Lieutenant Jacob Fauck, and Cadet Second Lieutenant Chance Barano.
Okay, y'all stay up here for just a little bit. I want to get both of our teams up.
Yeah. Let's go ahead and get a group picture with just them first, yeah. In addition to this color guard unit, our female color guard unit received second place, and the Commander Cadet Major Madison Broadwell was rated as the best commander. Cadet Major Madison Broadwell. Other members of this awarded unit are Cadet Lance Corporal Janice Calderon, Cadet Lance Corporal Melanie Aruze, and Cadet Lance Corporal Tyra Jackson.
Colonel Blasko, come join us, please. Colonel Blasko, please come on up.
While they're getting their picture taken as a group-
Colonel Blasko, please come join this group.
In addition to the top color guard units being recognized today, cadets from Belton competed in physical fitness, armed drill, unarmed drill inspection, marksmanship, and academics. And again, congratulations to both units.
All right, we're going to take a picture. Now we're going to get everybody, okay, photo ops. Parents, please feel free to come up if you want to take a picture. You're welcome to. We like taking pictures. Come on up, yes. Colonel Blasko, be sure and get in that picture.
There we go. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Appreciate you.
How many? While they are smiling, let me just mention, I understand from Colonel Blasko and Gunny Torres that this competition was all of the Marine Corps Junior ROTCs around Texas. Over twenty different schools were represented, and our champions, right here, we had the top two commanders and the first and second place teams. That's really incredibly impressive and indicative of the fine quality of program that we have. We've got over two hundred students involved, and a great program, doing great things at our high school. Thank you. Thank you, Colonel Blasko. Thank you all for coming tonight and joining with us. I've, I'll go ahead and say this. I've told them that they've got me spoiled. When I go anywhere else and see a color guard, I always say, "Ooh, they're not quite as polished as ours," students, and that's a good thing. That's something to be very proud of. We're very proud of these students. Okay, at this time, we'd like to recognize our, some Henry T. Wasco VFW Post 4008 award winners. What did I miss? Oh, I'm sorry. We're supposed to do all-state choir. I was going to wait for choir at the end. I'm so sorry. Let's do our all-state choir. They're awesome.
Choir. Belton High School student vocalists Rachel Wolub and Cara Fish have been selected as members of the Texas All-State Choirs. Rachel, a senior and placed fourth chair soprano, and will be a part of the All-State Treble Choir. And Cara, a sophomore, placed first chair alto, and will be in the All-State Mixed Choir. Both will perform with the best singers in the state and work with world-renowned clinicians throughout the Texas Music Educators Association Convention in San Antonio, culminating in a performance for an audience of thousands on Saturday, February seventeenth. Congratulations.
Get away, Rachel and Cara! Fine arts are highly valued in Belton, and you all represented us at the very highest level. Congratulations. We're really proud of y'all.
And we have with us tonight the Belton High School Choir, directors Tonya Luvorn and Travis Campbell.
Thank you, Tony and Travis. Appreciate y'all being here. Okay, now let's do the Henry T. Wasco VFW Post Award Winners.
Yes. First up, we have Sophie Broome, an eighth-grade student from North Belton Middle School, who won first place in the Wasco VFW Post 4008 Patriots pin essay contest. This year's theme was "America's Gift to My Generation," and Sophie's essay articulated the gift being unity. Advancing from the post competition, Sophie's essay placed third in the district competition. Elizabeth Hausen, a history teacher at North Belton, is her sponsor. Congratulations, Sophie.
Y'all go take as many pictures as you want. Okay, we have more.
We do. Two more, to be exact. First up, or second up, I should say, Maya Borchart, an eleventh-grade student from Melton New Tech High School at Wasco, won first place, Wasco, won first place in the Wasco VFW Post 4008 Voices of Democracy audio essay contest. In this contest, Maya's entry was judged on originality, content, and delivery, and she went on to receive third place in the District 14 VFW competition. Mr. Tim Potts, a U.S. history teacher at New Tech, is her sponsor, and I know Tim Potts is here with us.
Yes, he is.
Yeah. Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right, Maya. Good job, Maya. How about one more?
Yes, sir. In this award, we have a teacher with us. VFW Post 4008-selected Southwest Elementary Second Grade Bilingual Teacher, Mrs. Linda SuFuentes, is their smart mare, VFW National Citizenship Education Teacher of the Year. The VFW annually recognizes teachers who teach citizenship, education topics regularly, and promote America's history and traditions effectively. Mrs. SuFuentes was nominated for the award by her Southwest colleague, Mr. Daryl Stapper, who's also a member of the post, who described her as civically-minded, thoughtful, and collaborative. Congratulations, Mrs. SuFuentes.
We're so thankful for the VFW Post for recognizing our students and staff and providing these opportunities for them to do that. Okay, well, we have our Rotary Educator of the Month from the Temple Rotary Club.
Yeah, tonight, Lenore Byrd is being recognized by the Temple Rotary Club for her service to Belton ISD, and she's been a sixth-grade math teacher at Lake Belton Middle School for eighteen years, all of her experiences in Belton. Ms. Byrd has a great ability to relate to people from various backgrounds. She gets students excited about learning math and applying their knowledge to real-world situations. Students appreciate her honesty and her willingness to work side by side with them. She oftentimes offers them early opportunities to come into her room for instructional support early in the day, and Chris Hobson, principal at Lake Belton Middle School, stated, "Lenore Byrd is an outstanding person with great integrity and a tremendous sense of personal responsibility. She is truly an asset to our campus and community." So congratulations.
Congratulations. Okay, with some interpretation-
Well, it's January, and it's School Board Recognition Month, so it's a great time to celebrate the crucial role that an elected Board of Trustee plays in our communities and our schools. Tonight, we want you to know how much we appreciate you and your hard work. As volunteers, you have an enormous responsibility of governing our school district. Your actions and decisions affect the present and future lives of our children. Tonight, we want to thank you for your commitment and service by honoring each of you with a Big Red Heart Award. The Big Red Heart Award program was started last year in our human resources, by our human resources staff to recognize staff members who demonstrate a high level of service to our students, families, schools, the district, and the community. The award was designed to honor those with a big red heart, as demonstrated through service to others, without expecting anything in return. A big red heart is also demonstrated through commitment to students, parents, and community, and each one of you is worthy of this special award. So I'd like to have each of you step forward as I read your award, and Dr. Muller is going to assist me in providing you with a certificate and the Big Red Heart Award lapel pin that each one of our employees get. So as I call your name, come forward and stand, and Dr. Muller will go over and stand by you as I read your award and hand you your certificate and pin, and then I'd like you to stay, because there's more.
I just mentioned, and I didn't say this earlier, Mike Cowan is unable to be with us this evening due to work commitment out of state, so fortunately, he's not with us.
Yeah, we'll make sure. I'll still read his award. Ty Taggart, come on up. Ty Taggart has served as a trustee since May of 2017. During the past few months, he has demonstrated his willingness to learn and his strong desire to serve the community he represents. Ty understands the meaning of community. Having lived in the Belton ISD community all of his life, he has forged strong relationships with students, parents, staff, and community members. He uses those relationships to build support for the district and its initiatives. Ty's heart is full of love for Belton ISD. When he speaks about the district and its programs and students, you know that he truly cares. He is most deserving of the Big Red Heart Award. Congratulations.
Get away, Ty.
Stay up there, Janet Lee.
It's hard to get an award, isn't it? It's a little awkward.
It's easier to-
But it's well-deserved. Janet Lee has served as a trustee since May of 2017. During a short period of time, she has established herself as a confident and knowledgeable board member. As a former educator in Belton ISD, Janet has a deep understanding of the issues impacting student success. She has a vision of high achievement and success for all, and asks questions in search of improving outcomes for our students and staff. Janet is open to new ideas and embraces change as needed to advance the mission, vision and mission of the district. She is positive, kind, and supportive of all things Belton ISD. She is most deserving of this Big Red Heart Award. Jeff Norwood has served as a member of the Belton ISD Board of Trustees for two years. Jeff quickly established himself as a strong and respected leader and a valuable member of the board. Jeff's calm demeanor and ability to thoughtfully analyze problems is a true asset to the governance of the district. He actively listens and provides meaningful feedback to ensure sound decision-making. He offers suggestions and guidance using his areas of strength and actively supports the district and his fellow board members. Jeff's interactions with children are evidence of his genuine care for them. He serves to make the district a better place for them. He is most deserving of this Big Red Heart Award. Leo Camden Jr. has served as a trustee since October of 2015. During the past two and a half years, he has been a strong team member, always respecting the opinions of others and supporting the decisions of the majority. Leo uses his strengths, talents, and knowledge to assist the district in making key business decisions impacting our taxpayers. He offers suggestions and provides meaningful feedback as needed in order to advance the work of the system. Although he is serving in his first term, Leo leads with the wisdom and maturity of a tenured board member. His confidence, maturity, and love of the community has had a positive impact, a positive effect on the team and the district. He is most deserving of this Big Red Heart Award. Sue M. Jordan. Sue M. Jordan has served as a member of the Belton ISD Board of Trustees for five years and was elected Board Secretary in May of 2016. During that time, she has demonstrated an unwavering passion and love for the district and its students. Sue understands her role as a trustee and is committed to fulfilling her responsibilities in an ethical and responsible manner, in such a way as to achieve the district's vision. She strives to be the best board member that she can be and continues to increase her knowledge. At board conferences, she attends as many sessions as possible and shares new learning with fellow board members. Sue is a true representative of the community. Her heart is full of love and kindness, and she is firm in her commitment to service. She is most deserving of this Big Red Heart Award. Mike Cowan. I'll read Mike's. Make you wait, Randy. Mike isn't here this evening, but I would like to read his aloud. Mike Cowan has demonstrated a love and commitment to Belton ISD through continued service as a trustee for eleven years. He serves with kindness and exudes confidence and humility as a leader. Mike is an advocate for Belton ISD and for all of its students. As a lifelong member of the community and a graduate of Belton ISD, Mike understands the culture and the heart of the educational system. He's knowledgeable of a wide range of educational programs and actively supports each one as he makes decisions in his role as a board member. Mike is steady and dependable in his leadership. He listens to understand and is thoughtful in his approach to the work. His positivity and kindness towards others is a positive influence on all of us. He is most deserving of this Big Red Heart Award. And last but not least, Mr. Randy Pittinger, our board president. Randy Pittinger's commitment to the students and families of Belton ISD as a trustee for the last twenty-four years is truly amazing. He serves with integrity and heart, always making decisions in the best interest of the children and the community. Randy has dedicated himself to making public education the best that it can be for every child. He spends countless hours at school events. He loves to celebrate the successes of our children and does so with great enthusiasm. When Randy can find a way to make things better for our students, he does. As a trustee, Randy is mindful of his role. When there are hard decisions to make, he actively seeks input. He views the world with a positive outlook, and he always believes the best in others. He is most deserving of this Big Red Heart Award. We also have some gifts for you this evening, so we'll hold on the pictures just a second, Robert. We have something really special that we're really excited to give you tonight. We worked closely with Celado Glassworks to make you your very own, one-of-a-kind heart, and my team members would like to bring those to you, and I'd like for you to open them and see them. I hope that they will serve as a reminder of our love, respect, and appreciation for you as our board.
Hi, look! Wonderful! Take a look, take a look. Yeah, they're all custom-made.
Be careful, they're fragile. You can use it as a paperweight, or you can get a stand to put those on, however you want to display them or use them. You're very welcome. And then finally, one more gift. We have purchased a book in your honor to be placed in all of the elementary libraries in the district. The book, "We Are All Wonders," aligns to the work that you have supported over the last couple of years to celebrate diversity in our district and to nurture the idea that every child is special and belongs. We thank you for your kindness to our children. You undoubtedly know that they are all wonders, so thank you very much. Now, let them take their picture. Now, let that be about them. You're welcome. Thank you for your service.
It is a, it is a great joy for us to get to serve in this capacity. This service of our community and of our children is an opportunity to bring us great joy, and sometimes the work can be challenging, but it is always purposeful and joyful, and so thank you for the opportunity. We have partnered with those of you who are making a difference for our kiddos every day. Okay, well, we get to celebrate, we're going to continue our celebration with a special presentation. Sam Listy, City of Belton City Manager is with us again this year, as he comes each year, bearing gifts.
Yes, it is the Christmas season still, a little bit, and so we're happy to come before you tonight, and again, let me add my appreciation to each of you for your service on the board, and Randy, understand, you know, with your decision to move on, we really appreciate the long tradition of partnership that we've had with the school district, and we appreciate you and each member of the board very, very much. But as each of you know, the state transportation code provides that the county commissioners may collect up to a dollar and a half for each vehicle registered in the county, and Bell County collects that full amount. Funds received from Bell County are from the period this past year, October 2016 to September 2017. The Belton City Council has chosen to honor the legislative intent of these fees and direct them to the intended purpose of the crossing guard program to ensure the safety of our schoolchildren. To that end, Belton is remitting these funds received from Bell County, combined with fees collected by the City of Belton, to BISD to be used in its crossing guard program, and the total amount of the check is $22,233.77, so a sizable amount. On behalf of Mayor Grayson and the entire Belton City Council, the City of Belton genuinely appreciates the partnership we have with BISD, and we look forward to other opportunities to work together in the future, and I'll hand that on to Randy.
Because we want to record now. Come on over here. We'll do a photo op, because this is a big deal, and I want to, well, let me just mention for those of you that aren't aware, and for our new members who may not know, while it is, as you mentioned, the legislative intent that these funds would be used for crossing guards, not every city does this. In fact, a long history, I don't know how many, as long as I can recall, the City of Belton has passed these funds along to the school district to fund crossing guards in our partnership for the safety of our students. But that's not something we take for granted, because not every city chooses to use those funds in that way. So thank you to the city's commitment to our children, to the city's commitment to our safety, and to partnership with you. You're good partners, boys. And we will deposit that check and spend it on our crossing guards. Wanted to mention just a special welcome. Chris Flore is with us. Chris is our representative on the Bell County Appraisal Board. Chris, we appreciate your service in representing both the City of Belton and Belton ISD, and appreciate you joining us this evening. Okay, at this time, exciting on our agenda is public comments. Brian Leahy signed up. You want to come on up?
First of all, I appreciate your time. I really do. Never done one of these before, so bear with me. I just was brought to my attention this week about some issues that some students are having in school that I know have been addressed in other states in this previous year, specifically last May and July. There was articles posted in New York Times and one in New Mexico where lunch shaming is becoming a bit of an issue with students who are overdue on their lunch charges in their accounts and things like that, which I know how that works, and I know, you know, nothing's free, but we have to collect somehow, some way. But I also know that there are more discreet ways and better ways to handle the presentation of, hey, you know, you're a little overdue. Let's contact your parents, see what we can do. I do know that there have been issues with peers who go in, they're at the end of the line, they put in their number, shows an overdrawn amount. You'll have a cap or a limit that I'm unaware of, but with that cap and limit, they remove the tray, they offer them a, what would be considered a less nutritious meal. I believe it's a cold cheese sandwich, which it's got, you know, your dairy, your fiber, it meets some nutritional value, presented in a brown sack, which I understand that's the commonality of it all, at the end of the line. I do know that lunch shaming is the term used for it. It's kind of a vicious term that I'm not quite comfortable with, but that's the term used, as well as the fact that it's done at the end of the line. I just want to bring to the attention and maybe make it apparent that this is an issue to the point to where my, I have a sibling whose friend encountered this issue this previous week. My sister holds her friends close, pretty dear. We ended up footing her bill and adding a little more to guide her through this, because it was pretty emotional, it wrecked her pretty hard. She's, her friend's going through a bit of an emotional state too at home. Some things just kind of piled up, and I understand these situations are kind of circumstantial as to what extreme they go at home and what's going on at home and things like that. So sometimes the lunch bills and things like that kind of get swept under the rug at home for bigger issues. at home for bigger issues, but that's a problem that's not just here in this school district, but in others as well, across the state, across the nation. I do know I did become aware of the fact that the debt owed is $9,499.81. My goal here is to bring the attention to lunch shaming, maybe propose a better way, think a better way, a more discreet way. Social shaming kind of, it sucks, you know? I work with children, and as a profession, I graduated UHBO, went to school to specifically help kids. So, hearing these things, my sister comes home, she's upset about it, in tears about it, kind of hits closer to home than I thought it would. So, I want that to be addressed and noted. I also want to address and make aware that I plan on starting a fundraiser through GoFundMe, some things outside through my work, through other places, to cover this, as well as maybe go a little further to make sure that through the school year, this is, it's nipped a little harder, it makes it easier for the families at home, reduces the amount of children that are being denied a meal, and it's not a warm meal they're being denied. It's, you know, the socialization, it's the shame, it's the embarrassment, it's everything that comes with it for a child who really has no control over what goes on in their at-home life, because we're talking about children under 17, 16, who can't get a job, who can't really help push that on their own, so they're fully dependent on their parents. I do know in the article previously written by the New York Times that California is pushing for a bill to try and get this more discreet, try and make it to where, at the end of the year, it's credited to the parents. Hey, over the summer, try and eat away at this as you can. I know New Mexico is putting aside a state fund through, I guess, a collaborative thing, where the state is going to work to push for a bigger budget in that area alone, that that money is strictly used and carried over to cover the overdue charges and things like that for children who just either at the poverty line, or the ones that suffer most statistically are the ones slightly above the poverty line, where they don't get approved financially for free lunches, they're at the discounted rate, or not so much the discounted rate, at that little gray area, and those are the ones that, those children are usually the ones that suffer the most, where the government says, we can't help you, you make too much, but you don't quite make enough to really help this end of it all out. I just wanted to make it aware and bring to the attention of the board that this is an issue that's now hitting close to home, and I was hoping that maybe something could be proposed, or done, or addressed to make this just less shameful and embarrassing for the child. Social shaming, peer shaming, it's not good on the child, it's developmentally, it hurts, it affects the child's emotional state. Studies have shown that it also leads to aggression. Textbooks used in schools in California, here in Texas, use statistics to prove that there's a direct correlation, which I know correlation doesn't mean causation, but a direct connection between anonymous survey done that says, between children between 15 and 18, where they did a self-evaluation of how they felt through either viewing the lunch situation or being a direct hand, and the effect of that, again, lunch shaming, I hate to use that term, but that's the only term out there for it. And so, I really feel like it's getting more and more of a problem, and it needs to be corrected for just the child's sake overall. And I'd just like to reiterate again, I'm going to start a fundraiser, a FundMe, as something to help with this as well. So, but that's basically all I wanted to say.
Brian, I just want to thank you first of all for coming and for your interest in this. This is not an item that's on our agenda, so we can't discuss it per se.
Yes, sir.
But I will tell you, we have discussed this in the past and have taken steps to address this. And I want to specifically introduce you and refer you to Rob Passichnik in the back. He is our Director of Child Nutrition Services, and would encourage you to visit with him, and maybe he can share with you some of the things that we do have in place to address those issues.
Can I find his information on the board, on the school website?
Absolutely, or before you leave. Anyway, I wanted to make sure you connect with him. Thank you very much for your interest in this. This is an area that we haven't addressed in the past and are very interested in making sure we take care of.
If there's any way that I could help or push that a little further, let me know.
If you'll visit with Rob, I bet he can help hook you up, so thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Is anyone else wishing to address the board? Hearing none. We'll move to the consent agenda. Any board members have any item you'd like pulled for discussion? Hearing none. Let me identify those items. We have the minutes of the previous meetings, December 4th, 2017, special meeting, and December 11th, 2017, regular meeting. We have the Unhonored Financial Report for the month ending December 31st, 2017. We have gifts, grants, and bequests. It's on page 39. You can go up to that page, identify those. We don't need to take any action, but do appreciate those who have contributed to our academic awards banquet, to various other events, and Project Heartbeat certainly. We appreciate those donations. We have other revenues, grants from private sources. As previously mentioned, we have the Child Safety Fee Funds from the City of Belton in the amount of $22,233.77. We're very appreciative of the City of Belton passing those funds along to us. We have one expenditure over $50,000. This is the Texas Studies Weekly. This is the cost to renew this resource for three years, beginning with the 2018-19 school year, in the amount of $101,208.78. The expenditure has been planned and budgeted using the Instructional Materials Allotment, or IMA, funds. We have the Annual Report of Student Activity Funds maintained at the high schools, and we appreciate the management of those funds for the use for our students. We have a resolution designating signatories for tech pool, local government pool investment accounts. This is to add Kerry Pridemore, our new Director of Finance. And we have designation of signatories for the first public Lone Star Local Government Pool Investment Accounts, again, to add Kerry Pridemore, our Director of Finance, along with Jennifer Landar, CFO, and Dr. Ken Cannon, our Superintendent. And then we have the resolution designating the district officers, again, Kerry Pridemore, Director of Finance, and Jennifer Land, our CFO. We have the resolution approving the annual investment report and recommended revisions to CDA Local Other Revenues Investments. It's the second reading that we had for review last month. We have the new course request for the 2018-19 school year. Again, some additional CTE courses from our Curriculum Instruction Department. Thank you for your work in that regard. And then we have setting the trustee election in Area 2 and Area 4 for Saturday, May 5th, 2018, and approve the order of election. We have the selection of the Interlocal Contracts Purchasing Cooperative as the construction delivery method for the Wall Street Auditorium 100-ton air-cooled chiller replacement project, and authorize the Superintendent to execute contracts for the project, and authorize the expenditure over $50,000, again, as we discussed last month. That is, the consent agenda is a motion to approve. Motion for Mr. Camden, second for Ms. Lee. All in favor of the motion, raise a hand. That passes unanimously. We'll move to the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Ken Cannon.
Right, just a couple of items. I'll start with the musical, South Pacific. That was the choice for this year's high school musical. We're excited about that. Performances will be held Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, February 2nd, 3rd, and 4th, at the Belton High School Performing Arts Center. The performances on Friday and Saturday are at 7:00 PM and on Sunday at 3:00 PM, and you are all invited to that. If you'd like tickets, please let Connie Torres know, and she will take care of you. This evening, we have with us our lead actor, is that what you call it in a music, an actor and our actress? Our actor is, our lead is Senior Nathan LeBlanc and Junior Karis McMurray, and they're here to give you a preview with a song from the musical titled, This Is How It Feels.
Welcome. I'm glad y'all are here. Let us know if you need any backup. Okay, cue us.
This is how it feels, living on a field. Here we are, it's like two old married people, I guess we've gone home and we're alone.
This is what I need, this is what I've longed for, someone young and smiling here upon my head.
You know, one mother said we had nothing in common. She's wrong, we have something very important, very much.
Yes, we are both in love.
Yes, but more than that, we're the same type of people, one of many, we appreciate you, and lose the last of our best. Really quite excited when two people are like, not last day, you know what I mean?
We are both knuckleheads, cockeyed optimists.
I hear the human race is falling on its face.
And hasn't very far to go.
But everywhere we will is the near build, and if we just ain't so.
I could say life is just a ball of jello, and appear more intelligent and smart, but I'm stuck like a dog with this thing called hope, and I can't get it out of my mind.
That was awesome. Great job. Well done.
We have wonderful musicals, and you can see why.
Look forward to.
So, we hope you all will come. We're also hosting, I'm hosting several opportunities for some of our key communicators to attend, and we've sent out invitations for that. You may have seen that as well, so there'll be fun performances, no doubt. Review and update of EIC Local Committee work. I wanted to mention that Dr. Deanna Love Smith has established a committee to conduct a formal review of our policies and procedures impacting grade point average. The committee will review EIC Local and make recommendations for changes if needed and as recommended by the committee. EIC Local impacts all of our high school students. However, we do anticipate that the policy changes will have the greatest impact on Belton New Tech High School at Wasco with the opening of Lake Belton High School. The committee will discuss GPA calculations and other related issues, and we were supposed to get started last week, however, because of the weather. We will start with the second scheduled meeting, which is February the 14th, February the 13th, excuse me. And Mrs. Lee Janet will be serving on the committee and representing the board, and I want to thank you for volunteering for doing that for us. Thank you. Bad weather update, just a little information that I want to share with you regarding last week's weather event. As you know, the largest impact of that weather event was forecasted for us, and when that front blew in just after dark, it looked as if those predictions were true. However, as you know, we woke up to some really cold weather the next morning, but the roads were clear, so you can't outpredict Mother Nature. We haven't had a significant weather event causing us to close since the 84th Texas Legislature amended the Texas Education Code to move from the requirement of 180 school days of instruction to a requirement of 75,600 minutes of instruction per year. And so, because our schedules do include this year more than the 75,600 required minutes of instruction, at this time, last week's closure will not require us to use the bad weather days that are marked on our calendar. Some districts didn't mark bad weather days on their calendar for this year since that change came into effect. We had continued to do that. We have those scheduled for March 30th and April 23rd, and at this time, we will not be using those. Our bell schedules for the elementary school, so each campus has to meet that requirement as well, every school has to meet that requirement. So, we're a little bit tighter at the elementary level and for New Tech High School, but we still have some additional minutes that can be used towards a delay or two, and even a closure. However, that could cause us to have to extend the school day to get that exact number for New Tech particularly. So, we'll be watching that, and hopefully, we won't have any bad weather to cause us to have to do that. But I just wanted to give you some information on the minutes of instruction. Do you have any questions for me?
No, I just want to thank you for making the call. I've had a lot of feedback, very positive, appreciating that, you know, when our weather forecasting leads to our public safety, folks, our police and tech dot and everybody saying, please stay off the roads and call it, you took the initiative and went ahead and did that. You can't guarantee the weather, but it is always safe to err on the side of caution. And I've heard many responses of people saying, thank you for letting us know early, before we put our kids to bed, all those kind of things, made things easier. And so, I suspect we'd have had pretty poor attendance on that day if we'd have had school. So, regardless, because of the forecast. So, thank you for making that. I think it was the right.
Appreciate that. Those are hard calls, and we do the best we can with the information that we have.
My son Dylan wants you to know, he's your biggest fan. He loves you for it.
I'm sure he does.
He was begging for that earlier in the day, and when we got that information, he's like, she's great.
Well, thank you, Dylan. I appreciate it very much. Thank y'all.
All right. So, the next item on our agenda is a resolution. You may have seen this resolution come out. The Texas Educators Vote, which is a coalition of public education organizations, has been working together to promote participation in elections, registering to vote and participating in elections, certainly not with any kind of directed how to vote, but to vote. It's significant to note that our, by law, our principals, high school principals are required to promote registering to vote for students who are 18 years old and eligible. And so, we've been following those laws and doing those things and providing that. But I thought it would be a good thing for us to join with our other school districts and other public education advocates in encouraging our students, our staff, our employees, and our families to participate in the process. Very important. And there's important elections, as they all are, but it's always seemed like the next one is the most important. They always say that, so I suppose the next one's the most important until that next one. So, if you'll scroll up to the next page, I do want to, I didn't ask anybody to do this, so I guess I'll do it. Whereas the Texas, this is the proposed regulation, and this resolution, this came from the recommended, slightly modified. Whereas the Texas Election Code Sections 276.001 and 276.004 protect an employee's right to vote, whereas exercising one's right to vote is a civic duty that should be encouraged and promoted. Whereas the Board of Trustees of Belton ISD seeks to create a culture of voting and encourage all district employees to model responsible citizenship for the benefit of students. Whereas public education and the educated citizenry created by public education are the greatest safeguards to the state of Texas and the continuation of a free society, and the institution of public education is best protected by a robust and informed electorate, now therefore be it resolved, that the Board of Trustees of Belton ISD supports a culture of voting and seeks to encourage maximum participation by district employees and eligible students in the elections process, that the Board of Trustees of Belton ISD authorizes the administration to take steps necessary to ensure maximum participation by district employees and eligible students in the elections process, which may include creating district communications that inform employees and eligible students of the importance of voting, creating district communications that inform employees and eligible students about when and where they may vote, creating district communications that encourage employees to participate in voter pledge programs, creating district communications that encourage employees to use third-party tools to learn about candidates' positions on public education, conducting campus or district-wide assemblies that promote a culture of voting, implementing administrative procedures that provide time during the early voting period for employees to vote, implementing no-cost incentives, well, this is the one I wanted to cut, actually, encouraging district and our campus coordination with volunteer organizations such as PTA or PTO, or Retired Educators Group to encourage and facilitate the district's efforts to create a culture of voting. I want to delete that one. We don't want to encourage necessarily dress code, or at least my recommendation is, and that would be adopted this day. Again, we have a great history of this. We've promoted our students, as mentioned, our employees to participate. We've sent out communications for years encouraging. But again, I think it's important that we support the coalition, Texas Educators Vote, with this, and so, it would be my recommendation that we approve this resolution with the exception of that next-to-last bullet point, the incentives, that we don't need to necessarily do that. do that, in my opinion, or at least if y'all are okay with that.
It's not on this paper.
Yeah.
Not on the revised one?
The revised one, the one on board. Right. Is anybody okay with that? There a motion to approve? A motion from Ms. Jordan, second from Mr. Camden. Any other comments or questions? All in favor of the motion, raise a hand. Passes unanimously. We will. And please, uh, continue efforts to communicate the importance of voting. I think that's a great part of civic responsibility in teaching our students to be good citizens and our employees to model that. We, it really fits with our resolution to treat, teach traditional moral values. And so this is a, a great tie-in to that. Okay, um, Mr. Schiller.
Sir.
Talk to us about employees.
Sir, we have, uh, this month, we're not requesting any action to be taken, but we did, I just want to give you a quick update. Uh, we did hire six teachers during this month, um, for positions and we've received and accepted two resignations. And this is the time of year when resignations start trickling in and we've received, and we have seven open positions right now for the upcoming school.
We have some news. So, uh, say again, how many positions you're recruiting for?
Seven open positions for this.
For next year. Okay. We don't need to take any action on that. But thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Muller, you want to talk to us about the school calendar? I think Dr. Kinkanen kind of gave you a, uh, a, a good, uh, segue to talk about minutes. So talk to us about minutes, school calendar minutes.
All right. Well, first of all, let me thank the District-Wide Education Improvement Committee for working through a process that led ultimately to the development of two options of calendars. Um, yes, state law now requires that you, uh, complete seven thousand, seventy-five thousand six hundred minutes over the span of a, of a school year. And what that does is provide flexibility. You can have shorter days, you can have longer days, as long as you cover those seventy-five thousand six hundred minutes. And so what you have in front of you is a proposed calendar. And, um, this actually received seventy percent of the votes. In the board item, it says four hundred and five votes out of eight hundred and seventy-seven eligible campus-based professional staff. That's the number of campus-based professional staff. However, five hundred and eighty voted, so four hundred and, uh, five out of five eighty is almost seventy percent. And that was as of the cutoff for the end of voting. Since that time, we've had additional people vote and it's bumped that percentage up to about seventy-two, seventy-three percent. So overwhelmingly, they wanted the option that is in front of you. And that option includes starting school for staff on August eighth. We have a new teacher, uh, in service the day before, but for all staff, it's August eighth is the, the first official day, so to speak. Start date for students is August twentieth. Um, we have four early release days for secondary stu- students, uh, two early release days for elementary students. We have fourteen staff development days built into this calendar. Um, Christmas break begins on December twentieth and runs to January fourth. Spring break is March eleventh through the fifteenth, and then graduation is May thirtieth. I will tell you that this calendar was coordinated across all Bell County, uh, school districts. We're all pretty close together. We are exactly the same with respect to spring break. Uh, we get out a little bit earlier for Christmas than some of the other schools.
That's really important. You know, it, it hasn't always been that way and it creates problems for families and work and, and all. And so that's just, appreciate. I know that takes some extra effort, but thank you for doing that.
And, um, we start a little bit earlier because we're a district of innovation. We can start earlier than the fourth Monday of August.
Which allows us to take more days off through the year, which clearly was a priority and that for our professional staff who voted on this, that, that seems to be, uh, their interest of having breaks throughout.
I would agree with that statement.
I assume that's the conversation through DEWIC, but, but again, and the vote shows that in comparing the different calendars. Anybody have any comments or questions? I'll ask, I always ask, was there any consideration of ability to get, be done before Memorial Day holiday?
Well, we actually talked about that and, uh, initially had a calendar that, that showed graduation, uh, prior to the Memorial Day holiday. Um, one of the cautions is that once we relinquish our spot at Bell County, then we perhaps lose it forever. Because there are schools that are waiting for Belton to give up that Thursday so that they can grab it.
Graduation is obviously very significant and part of, uh, element for the planning. And so, uh, there aren't a lot of options for us to have graduation.
We were a little concerned that once that Thursday is gone, uh, then every subsequent year, you would be building a calendar that ended before Memorial Day.
You'd be really tied to it.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, understand.
So it was considered, but...
Out of, just out of curiosity, has there been any, was there a consideration or discussion for DEWIC about the minutes, the, the length of the school day? That was much of our discussion in the last year or so.
Well...
But are we satisfied with where that is and that works well with it?
Well, currently we have, uh, as was mentioned, we have more minutes at the secondary schools than we do at the elementary schools. For every day that is, we are in session, we record four hundred and forty-five minutes bell to bell. It's operational minutes. Um, four hundred and forty-five, four hundred and forty-five minutes for each of the elementary schools times the hundred and seventy-three, um, puts you over the, the required number of minutes. At the same time, we have a couple of early release days. What, um, if you count the number of minutes, currently we have two days that we could, uh, kind of a two-day cushion or a buffer.
Which is a good thing.
At New Tech, we're slightly below that because they have four early release days, being a secondary campus. So we have one point seven days of buffer for New Tech. But I think for next year, we intend to adjust that. So we have two days across the board.
Okay. So an adjustment for, for those.
Starting and ending times, yes.
Okay. Deal. Everybody okay with this? Everybody question, comment?
Motion to approve?
Motion from Mr. Camden?
Second.
For Mr. Taggart? Excuse me. Uh, any other questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, raise a hand. And that'll pass unanimously. Uh, Dr. Muller, thank you for your work, again, coordinating with other school districts and especially please pass along our thanks to DEWIC. I know that's a, that's a process that takes time and, and going over and over and over and working out and scratching things through and, and then bringing it back and forth, a number of, uh, drafts in that process. We appreciate the work on that. Okay, our next item on our agenda is the annual independent audit report. Paula Lauer is with us with Patio, Brandon Hill. Uh, would just share with the board as, kind of as a reminder, and for those of you that haven't, this is your first run through this, the board contracts with an external auditor, Paula, uh, with Patio, Brandon Hill, this example, for the last few years, to conduct an audit of our business office, of our finances. As trustees, we are responsible for the financial, uh, management of our district and we have great confidence, uh, in our staff. But, um, it is important to get an external audit. And so, uh, Paula works directly for us as board members, works with the administration to get the information, but she works directly for us and reports directly to us. And so kind of a unique situation. Um, there really aren't other consultants who work directly for the board. So again, I want to thank you for being here. Thank you for your work. And I know this is a multi-month process. Uh, it took a little bit longer to get the final report this year, uh, but, but that's okay. We appreciate the thoroughness of it. So, um, good news is it looks really good, but give us the details.
Yes, definitely. Yeah, I'm glad to be here, uh, this evening. Um, as you did mention, you know, it took us a little bit longer, uh, this year, but, uh, we came back to, uh, giving the same results within our audit report as well. Um, but what I wanted to do today is, um, just talk about the process of, um, our audit for a little bit, um, let you know the results of the audit and also just give you a couple of highlights within the financial statements as well. I think each of you do have a copy of this report in front of you. Um, so, um, but basically, um, as, um, was mentioned, we do work directly for the board. And, um, as a part of that process, um, on an annual basis, basically what we do is we come out for a, a week or two during, uh, the summer months and we look at internal controls and processes that the district does have that would feed information into the financial statements that you see here today. Uh, we get an understanding of those processes. We do some walkthroughs of the particular transactions, um, select, um, multiple transactions as well and do some detailed tests, um, there to make sure, uh, things are happening the way that they should be as well. Um, then in, um, mid-October, um, within, in November as well, we'll come out for three weeks with, um, our audit team, um, that are out here onsite on a daily basis. And then we have another supervisor, myself the partner, on this particular engagement. Uh, we come out periodically as well. We're, um, constantly overseeing the group that we have, um, here in the field on a daily basis as well. Um, and during that time, when we're out here in, um, for final field work, as we refer to it, uh, we're doing some additional detailed tests and looking at balances, getting confirmations from other entities, um, getting some assurance that these numbers and, um, information that you see here today is, um, reasonably correct. Basically what that means is, um, if you're looking at these financial statements, um, you can, um, read them and understand them and would make, um, some proper, um, and accurate determinations based off of this information as well in decisions. So that's kind of how the process works. And, um, actually last week, I did meet with the officers as well of, of the board and sat down in a meeting there and with management, um, as a part of that meeting too, and talked about, you know, the audit and the results of the audit there too. But, um, here today, uh, we're just talking about, um, you know, some of the process and giving a summary too. So we want to look at the results of all of these procedures and, and work that we, that, um, the orders put in as well as, um, management too. And we're going to flip to the very last page of the report. So on page seventy-four, I always refer to this page, um, because it's a nice summary of what the results are for the audit. And you can see at the very top, it's, it talks about the financial statements, summary of our results, the financial statements, and it says an unmodified opinion there. And an unmodified opinion is the highest opinion that can be rendered, is known as a clean opinion. So it's basically saying that we, um, are providing an assurance that these financial statements are materially correct. Uh, we don't have any type of material weaknesses or significant deficiencies to bring to, um, that we've included in this report today. Uh, some additional good news. And basically what that means is, um, as we were going through controls and processes, uh, we did not, um, have information to bring to your attention in this report today. And as you can see, the next section there talks about the federal awards. So when an entity does expend more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal awards, it kicks off another audit that we refer to as a single audit. Um, so, but basically with that, um, we, we do perform another risk assessment on the federal awards that have been expended at this particular district and, um, required to, based off of that risk assessment, to select a couple of federal programs to look at in regards to whether or not they're, meet certain compliance requirements and how the money is spent and as well controls over those, how the, the funds are spent as well. And you can see this year, we, uh, looked at the, um, special education cluster and, um, Title I as well. And the results of that, and we, again, it was an unmodified opinion on these federal awards and no items to bring to your attention as well. So in summary, um, it was a, a clean report and, um, definitely want to, you know, thank Jennifer and all of her help and her staff too, and helping us get to here this year as well. But there's a couple of things that I wanted to make sure that we pointed out to you today. And on page seventeen, you'll find the balance sheet for the governmental funds. I know everyone, when you get to the budget time and, uh, probably throughout the year, looking at, um, the monthly financial statements, you're always probably looking at fund balance and, and where are you guys at as a district as a whole. And you can see on page seventeen, the general fund balance was approximately twenty-six point five million dollars for the general fund. Um, a portion of the, this fund balance was assigned for additional purposes. In that, you can see the detail of that on page forty-six. So you have unassigned fund balance. Uh, basically those are funds that can be used for projects going forward in two thousand and eighteen. It's about twenty-two point five million dollars, which is approximately three months of your general fund expenditures for fiscal year between two thousand and seventeen. So looking on page nineteen, you can see, um, the revenues and expenditures for the district. And the general fund did increase fund balance by approximately one point four million dollars. And you'll also see on this particular page a column for capital projects. And you can see towards, I guess, um, the bottom of the page, we have a line related to, um, capital-related debt issued of a hundred and seventeen million dollars. Just so you know, that's the bonds that were issued last year, um, to build a new high school. That's where the funds are in going in forward years, uh, in future years. You will see those expenditures being reported in this column as well as those funds do get expended. Well, those are just a couple of things that I wanted to, um, make sure I bring to your attention. And, um, definitely appreciate, um, Jennifer and everyone else's, um, help that we did get this year. Uh, we, you know, as, as I mentioned, we look at compliance for federal awards and how those funds do get expended. So there's several different departments that we're involved with and, uh, communicating with throughout the audit process. So thank you. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Paula. You just mentioned, for those of us who aren't accountants, Paula does a really good job of explaining it to us in plain language. Mike is an accountant and understands, uh, Richard perhaps better, but, but in our work, we make, uh, deal with different types of things. A lot of really good information in here and I just encourage you to use this. I have found this to be a good tool to refer back to this on our website. And we have a hard copy, but it's also available on our website. Uh, the information that you can refer back to, understanding, uh, things as we build budgets, uh, kind of where we are. There's a few things I wanted to just use this to, to remind everybody of. We do still have some, some unbalanced pre- previous bond issues, as you'll see on page one, some, uh, some fund balances that we have that we'll be able to utilize. There's, um, kind of an interesting, I'll be direct to it, page seventy-one, has some interesting extra amounts that people often ask us about, things like, uh, Impact Eight. People say, oh, how much do you get an Impact Eight? Uh, we, we read in the paper here and the news about the huge billions and billions and billions that some of our neighbors, uh, to the west receive. We get seventy-four thousand thirty-nine dollars last year from Impact Eight, which is, which is significant, but it is nowhere near at a level. Um, another one just, Tom I, because we have the, uh, ROTC color guard here, we get, uh, sixty-seven thousand four hundred and four dollars, uh, to support that program. Uh, and so that's a, a joint partnership. Anyway, some of these things, you can just kind of see where those ones come from. And, um, and I, particularly at Impact Eight, we're always going to get asked that multiple times a year, how much we get. So it's nice to have that available here. Always kind of, I like that, dog ear that corner so that we get that. Anyway, a lot of good information. Bottom line though, this is an excellent report which tells us what we believe we see every month in our reports and some of the reports, that, that our business office is doing a great job, being good stewards of our funds and managing our funds and, um, Paula is helping work with us in terms of making sure that everything is accounted correctly and coded properly and, and anything like that. Good reports. Any specific questions? We've got Paula here. It's the right time to ask some questions. You want to learn accounting?
That'd be your wall.
I told Janet, I'll go ahead and carry on. I told Janet, it took me a few years to learn how to figure out how to pick up the pieces that were particularly helpful because there's lots of stuff and they have their own language.
We do, we do. I've heard that.
Part of it. So, thank you.
I'm hoping at our next, um, summer, summer training conference that I could go to a few of these classes and learn a little bit more.
There you go. The good news at this point is we do not have any identified issues. This is a clean audit.
As clean as a cup. And, and this is something that we're, again, we've become accustomed to, but we shouldn't take for granted. So, uh, we can, for land, your staff, all the folks who are working hard to make sure we are doing the right thing and, and managing our funds, so we're, we're, thank you for that. So, I think we need, uh, uh, to approve this audit officially so that we can post it and submit it, uh, CPA and, and all those, uh, things. So is there a motion to approve the audit as submitted? Motion for Mr. Nolan, second for Mr. Taggart. Any other questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, raise a hand. That passes unanimously. I'll thank you again for your work with our district. You help us get better and, and we appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Jennifer, we look forward to continued great things from our business office. Okay, wow. Well, speaking of reports from, that was ending last fiscal year.
Speaking of hard language to understand.
Follow-up reports. Uh, let's, uh, give us the, uh, annual report.
So I am here tonight to talk... So I am here tonight to talk...
This is, actually, I'm supposed to say, this is a public hearing. So let me officially, at six thirteen, we are going to convene our public hearing.
And I don't have my computer up here to...
Twenty-seventeen District Annual Report.
Okay. Yes, so this is a public hearing. We are required by the state of Texas to have a public hearing within ninety days of receiving our final Texas Academic Performance Report. And so I'm going to shift a little bit because it's a public hearing. Make sure I'm speaking to both audiences. I do want, before I begin, to publicly thank Vicki Dean, who's here tonight, our Director of Interventions and Accountability, who spent a lot of time preparing this report for the public and then also just working with our principals to continually make sure we understand all of the changes that go, that happen throughout our accountability systems. While we have shared all of this information publicly throughout the year as we've received the different components, what happens is by about December, all of those reports become final for the state, and then the state sends us a final. And so they kind of wait till they get everybody's information from all of the districts. So what I want to do is go over what's required in this report and tell you a little bit about it. First of all, before we ever talk about scores or reports or finances, I think it's always important for us to keep at the forefront our mission. And that is our vision that every student will excel in tomorrow's world. And so a leader in preparing every student. So, and we keep everyone in mind as we look at this data and identify our strengths and then areas for continuous improvement. There are required components of the report. In fact, there are seven of them. And so I want to make sure you know what those are before I show you how you can find all of those publicly on the website. The first is our Texas Academic Performance Report. That is the majority of what is in this report, and it talks about all of our accountability and student performance ratings. And I'll go into a little bit of that in a minute. Our PMS Financial Standard Reports, our accreditation statuses, our performance objectives, our report on our violent, our criminal incidences, our student performance in post-secondary institutions. And then it is recommended, but we do go ahead and include access to the taper glossary in case there are any terms that someone might not be familiar with. They could find those definitions there. And so if you'll get me to that website. Mr. Peterson? Thank you. So here you can see is located on our website under the About section of Belton ISD, our two thousand and seventeen Accountability Report. And the first thing that you'll see are our three ratings that we're required to report. The first being our financial rating, which is A Superior. The second being our accountability rating, which is met standard. And the third being our accreditation rating, which is accredited. I would like to point out that all three of those are the highest ratings that we could receive. Next, you'll see, as we're proud of. Next, you will see on this, you'll see a column that indicates our taper report. And in that report, you will find our academic performance for Belton ISD and all of our schools. And that is included two years with performance. It breaks down our student academic performance by grade, subject and demographics. It includes our attendance information, and then it also includes a profile of the district or each campus. In the second column, you will find all of the financial standards reports for the district and the campus. Those include our district level, the district level recudes our finance receipts, fund balances, dispersments, and program expenditures. All of these are based on the two thousand and fourteen certified property values and the unassigned fund balance. And then at the campus, you'll see financial information by object, fund, function, and program. And again, you'll see the district's rating, which was an A Superior. And we're very proud of that. Again, I mentioned our accreditation status. The third column is our campus improvement, our report card. That is a one to two-page summary of our accountability performance. It's similar to the taper, but it's just a one-page. It's the page that will be sent home to, or accessed by all the parents. We've sent a direct link to parents through Sky Alert. And then we're required to report our campus performance objectives and our district performance objectives. And those can be best found in our district and campus plans. So we've provided access directly to all of those. If you'll scroll down a little bit farther, there is a report on, that's required component, which is the report on our violent or criminal incidences. We have reported, we have included this report because it is required. However, we have zero incidences of any violent or criminal incidences on any of our campuses. So we've included the report, but it does state all zeros. The next piece is our student performance in post-secondary institutions. This is a report based on the first year of enrollment after high school. It is a little tricky in terms of when you see what students are assigned to us, whether it's a four-year college or two-year college. We are heavily weighted on two-year colleges. But this report includes any dual-credit courses that a student took in high school. So it automatically inflates it a little bit to report two-year college and not maybe their actual enrollment their first year in college. Also, this is based on the fourteen, fifteen school year. So whereas the majority of information throughout these reports is the sixteen, seventeen school year, this is the fourteen, fifteen. And then the final component of this is the glossary, which, like I said, will identify any terms that you might have questions about. All of this is accessible on our website, and we will have copies on hand should anyone not have internet access but would like to access any component of the report. And so with that, do I have any questions from any of you?
This is a public hearing. Are any questions or comments? The board have any questions or comments? Okay, well, it is six twenty. We will end the public hearing. Thank you for the report. These are really good reports. We've been looking at pieces of this, but it's good to kind of have it all compiled. I really like how it's compiled all on the website and available for anybody who wants to get a real good thorough overview.
Like I said, absolutely. Thank you.
All right. Our next item is an eight-hundred-and-something-page policy update. Angela? The good news is we are not taking any action tonight. Just for review.
Right.
And the better news is most of it's legal, which we have, don't really even have any say in anyway. It's just informational.
Exactly. I did want to point out that CO Local does deal with the lunch grace period issue that came up in public comment tonight. So we are looking at the local policy that Tasby's proposed, and we will be making some changes to make sure that it aligns with our policy, our practice, and that we're legal. It's our first review of these policies, and we hope to get you more information with feedback from our administration by the end of the week. You're right, there's a lot here, there's a lot to review. But most of it, you've already heard about. Most of it, you heard about last summer.
This is the formal implementation of things that have been in place, and we've been practicing, we heard about it training in the past. So as you go through this, it's not unfamiliar or new. It's a good review, though.
Yeah. We do anticipate making some changes to the policies that Tasby has proposed and will bring those back to you and keep you updated.
Could we, could I request the vantage points? They have a, they usually submit a vantage points in the packet. Get that to us too. That's kind of a summary.
Vantage point, I'll get that to you with our, the worksheet.
Great, that'll be, that'll be good. That gives us kind of the summary of, the markup sheets that shows the changes is really good to see, but the summary packet is very helpful.
It's not eight-hundred pages.
It's not eight-hundred pages. Right, exactly. It's the...
Quite a splash.
It's the crib notes, I guess. Whatever the term for that is. Right, okay. Cliff notes, there you go. Okay, any items for future agenda administrative reports? Ty? No? Sue?
Yes, sir.
Jeff?
Nope.
Okay, let me identify a few issues we have coming up. On Wednesday, we're going to do the groundbreaking for Charter Oak Elementary School at eleven-thirty. So hope everybody can join us for that. We'll celebrate with our students and our community. Invite everybody to join us for that.
It'll be warmer.
And it's going to be a nice warm day. Warmer day. Okay, wear a jacket, but not cold. On the twenty-ninth, the Belton New Tech High School Owosco Academic Excellence Ceremony. Looking forward to that. So great opportunity to celebrate with some of our students. We have a board meeting for superintendent evaluation scheduled for February fifth. We will get some materials out next week. We will receive some materials next week in preparation for that, and then we will meet. And then our next regular meeting is February twenty-sixth. We're in a series this last, this month and the next two months where we're meeting actually on the fourth Monday instead of the third because of the holidays that fall. So keep in mind that we won't be here until February twenty-sixth. That is, those are the key, key things on our calendar. It is six twenty-three. At this time, the board will go into closed session for personnel consultation with attorney and deliberations about real property. We will, any action we take, we'll be taking an open session when we return. Thank you all for being with us. If you won't be with us when we come back. All right. It is seven twelve, and we will reconvene in open session. Might just mention to you that Teresa Jones, our Fort Hood liaison officer, left us a thank you for School Board Appreciation Month and wanted me to pass on to you appreciation that they appreciate us at Fort Hood and for our support of Fort Hood students. Mr. Camden has left prior to returning to closed session. At this time, sorry, I'm working on my agenda here. We will take action on a compromise settlement and releasing agreement regarding professional employee Alfonso Maxwell. It's my recommendation that we rescind the proposed termination of Alfonso Maxwell's teacher contracts, approve the settlement and release agreement with Alfonso Maxwell, and authorize the superintendent to execute the settlement and release agreement on behalf of the board. Is there a motion to approve? I have a motion for Ms. Jordan, segment for Mr. Taggart. Any questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, raise a hand. That passes unanimously. And I believe that completes our business lesson. Anybody has any questions about anything? Got a question about building or anything? You want to, you got, this is a future, we can go back to... Yeah, update on a question? Okay. Okay, it is seven thirteen, and we are adjourned. Thank you all for joining us this evening.